Combine work session and board meeting started. We'll start with introductions. Thanks. I'm Pat Malone, Commissioner.
Joe Kirby, County Administrator.
Zan, County Councilman.
Calling in? Okay. All right. We went through who's physically present. People that are calling in, introduce yourselves. Can you start us off, Annabelle?
Can folks hear us? No, 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 no.
Sorry.
Commissioner Hara Mio or Commissioner Ojuro, can you hear us? Commissioner Ojuro or Hara Mio, can you hear us?
Wow. What happened?
Our polycom's not working.
Best meeting ever.
And it was just working. Do you need me to get you the number?
Uh, yeah.
See, that's the sort of thing she said, "Watch yourself."
You're faster than I am. I've got it. What'd I tell ya?
Please enter your access code followed by the pound to enable audio control.
Hello, Commissioner Ojuro, Commissioner Hara Mio, can you hear me? Yay!
Good morning.
All right. We've done introductions in the room here. Zan, why don't you start us off with introductions from those that are phoning in?
Dan Ojuro, Commissioner. Annabelle Hara Mio, Commissioner.
Greg Ridley, Sheriff's Office.
Welcome.
Mary Ali, Fire Department.
Morning.
Len McCray, Sheriff's Board Manager.
Teresa Farley, Board of Commissioners.
Amy Kirby, Assistant.
Eric Kamala, Forest Recorder.
Looks like we have a couple guests calling in. Mike Pilesstein, are you there?
Yeah, hello. I'm just listening in. Thanks.
Welcome. And Julie Jackson?
Yes, I'm listening in. I'm Julie Jackson for Community Services.
Good morning. All right. Sean Collins?
Yep, I'm here, listening in. About what questions would be needed.
Great. And then we have...
Chris Vance.
You couldn't hear, we went around the room. Vance, Lalea, Joe and I are in the office.
Vance is sitting here riveted.
He's ready for anything we throw at him. Paul Teigen?
Yeah, good morning, everybody. This is Paul Teigen, I'm the Mary's Peak Field Manager for the BLM.
Great. You're second on our agenda. And Jen Moore from the COG.
And Keith Masley, Randy Moore from the Council of Governments is also at this this morning. I am, I'm here, Commissioners, just to be a support. Thank you.
Welcome.
Commissioner Malone, before we get started, I'd just like to share with county staff, if you are a county staff member and you're participating as a result of the coronavirus emergency response policy discussion, those discussions will not begin till probably between 10:00 and 10:15 at this point, is my best guess. So if you don't need to be on the phone waiting for the policy meeting, I'd encourage you to dial back in at a later time. So anyway, 10:00 to 10:15 is my best guess when we'll begin the policy discussion regarding coronavirus.
Alan Jack?
Thanks, Joe. Let's see. We have Donna McLeigh?
You're muted. Is that a little better?
Yes.
Donna McLeigh, I'm the acting Forest Supervisor from the Tsayuslaw National Forest.
Great.
Nice to be here.
Good morning. Like I told Paul, you folks are second on our agenda. And so I think we've done introductions. Are there any announcements? All right.
I also have Michelle Holman, that's going to join me, the District Ranger that oversees Mary's Peak. So she'll be on the call too with us.
Great. All right. Jen and Randy, why don't you get us started with activities at the Council of Governments?
Okay, so I will start us off with the Veterans Service Office report. You have the narrative in your pocket. What I would like to highlight for you is that since we've brought Chris Nelson onboard as our Veteran Service Officer and Supervisor for the program, he's taken some time to evaluate the manner in which we've been tracking some of our client contacts. And he determined that we did have a lack in how we were actually counting for a lot of the support that we're giving to our veteran clients outside of the regular claims process. Meaning, there have been a number of ways in which we're supporting our veterans that don't necessarily or don't automatically result in a claim being filed. And so he has worked with the team to identify a means by which we can effectively track that without the tracking taking more time than actually providing service to our clients. And so I've noted that in your report on page two. You would expect to see the client contact numbers increase a bit over what we've previously reported due to this change in how we are tracking those client contacts. I don't have anything else to highlight out of the report except to say that our team has been adapting extremely well. We have been serving our clients remotely since about the third week of March. And in some respects, because of the way that the VA has adapted to the stay home stay safe, we have been able to see some claims actually move a little faster through the process. But we are, the team is resilient. And while we miss seeing our veterans in person, I'm really proud of the way that they've presented and been able to take all of our service remote. And happy to answer any questions.
Okay. Do we have any questions about Veteran Services or Jen?
Thank you, Jennifer, for the report. And thank you for sticking in there.
And I see that we've actually brought in a little bit more because of the addition of money to the county in this last quarter. Despite disruption, I'm really glad that CW's been able to rebuild relationships and things going.
He is gaining much momentum. I think he's climbing a little bit up his learning curve. But some of the changes that he's implemented, you know, some of them are seemingly simple, but they are, I believe, going to add up over time to a really big payoff for the office. So I'm really pleased to have him on the team. Pardon, but I did, would like to mention the fact that we did have two pre-substantial training opportunities that required travel. One being the National Association of County Veteran Service Officers, the NACDSO. That was scheduled for early June. It's an eight-day conference in Atlanta. They are trying to figure out how they're going to manage that electronically now. And so we do have a little bit of room left in our training budget because we won't obviously be traveling. And so CW and the team are looking at other ways that they can effectively use those funds for relevant training for the team. So make note of that. That will happen before our next quarterly report. So just as a heads up.
I had a question. Jen, seems like a long time ago. It was over a month ago. I think the Commissioner's got a, were copied on a letter to the Veteran Services from the state of Oregon saying that we weren't spending all the money that had been allocated. Has that issue been addressed?
Yes. So part of the underspent was due to the vacancy that we had in that Veteran Service Officer position, which of course with CW has been filled. We have been communicating with ODVA and mapped out our plans for coming current with those funds. In light of the pandemic and the disruption that brings to, you know, travel and for training and those kinds of things, they have communicated with us, in fact, across the state, that they anticipate and expect any unused funds to be carried forward into the next fiscal year. So ODVA is very aware that the impacts that just are, how we're operating in this season are impacting budgets. That said, Curtis has also evaluated additional tools, specifically technology tools, that will enable his team to better serve clients remotely. And so I anticipate seeing some of those purchases come through over the next couple of weeks. He's also looked at how we can creatively, within scope of course, expand hours and what else we can do to provide, again, additional service beyond the claims work to our veterans. So for example, we're looking at making an additional investment in the Veterans Transportation Assistance Program that we talked to you about last year. So we're evaluating where we can be good stewards of those dollars so that we're not very much underspent. But again, acknowledging that he still has that opportunity to carry forward in the outstanding funds.
Great. So the state is satisfied with our approach and the programs that we have in place? Great.
Yes, sir.
We don't get notices very often that we're not spending enough money. So that one caught my attention. But thanks for the update. Any other questions about Veteran Services? Okay? Well, thank you. And really sounds like the program's on track and have a good person leading the charge. And that's, that's good news. So, thank you. All right. Let's see here. You had another kind of series of reports. And I think you're up again, Jen.
And actually, on this one, I'm going to talk to you, stick over to Randy.
Okay.
Good morning, Commissioners. Actually, I was not planning on bringing on the agenda today, so I'm actually just going to tell you that I'm looking forward to coming back in the near future. We have a depression reduction program called RCRLOs. And I hope that one of these days soon I will come back and be talking to you about that. It doesn't seem like this is a great time to talk about it because unfortunately, it's a face-to-face program. And at this point, we're on hold because of social isolation. We are making sure we're checking in with all of our consumers weekly. But the program as far as RCRLOs is on hold. And I wanted to come back and talk to you when we are back accepting RCRLOs because we do feel like it's a great program and we want you to know about it so that you can let your community members know if it's something that would be helpful to them. So we hope to be back on the agenda another day soon when we are back seeing people face to face in their homes.
Okay.
I have a quick question, Randy. With respect to the life-for-life seeing a loneliness sign that the state has set up, when someone from Ben County or from any of the COG counties calls that loneliness sign, do you guys get a heads up so that you know that there's someone, a senior here in our community that's looking for help?
We do give a call back through our Aging and Disability Resource Connection Call Center, letting us know that someone has called. We have also, and Jen might want to jump back in on the conversation here, we actually also are doing some reaching out with our Older Adult Behavior Health Initiative staff people, that's Marie Labor and Ellen Beadman. So someone actually calls the ADRC, Call Center for Aging and Disability Resource Connection Call Center, and is saying that they are struggling with some kind of loneliness, stress, anxiety. We're actually, the Older Adult Behavior Health Initiative consultants have generously volunteered to be a life mate for those people. And we're having them call them back and talk to them and see if we might be able to provide some other resources or support. Excellent, thank you.
Can either one of you give us a little update on the Stand By Me financial program status?
Sure, I can do that. So we, I think the last time we were here mentioned that we were contacting with an alternative grant writer. And she's fully onboard. In fact, she and I have a scheduled meeting a little bit later this week. We'll begin submitting proposals here, I would say, before midnight. And so we're working to get that process back fully on track. I believe we should be back in front of you folks in another month and a half or so with a regular quarterly update.
Okay. Thank you. Well, if I can find it here, I had a question on, well, Meals on Wheels, I guess. Can you give us a little update on that?
Sure. So across the region, we've seen an increase in requests for service. And we've been providing about 1,000 additional meals per month. And that, of course, is spread out across the region. We have seen some, I would call it, kind of regular sort of ups and downs within our volunteer corps. Some of our volunteers that have been longstanding with the program are themselves in the vulnerable population range. And so some are choosing to stay home and stay safe. Some are being persuasively told by their friends and family that, you know, Mom, I know you love the program, but you really need to stay home. And so we have seen some shifts in volunteers taking a pause for this duration. We've also seen, though, an increase of other folks that have had a change to their schedule as well, and so have an availability that they didn't have before and are looking for tangible ways to contribute and really support vulnerable folks within the community. So all of that will say that, for the most part, we're not experiencing any real difficulty in being able to deliver to our existing clients. We are working with a number of various providers throughout the region. The state has a bi-weekly conference call for the statewide nutrition programs that we participate in, as well as, like we can see, the Food Security, Food and Disability Work Group that's led by Matt Celeste. They're having two calls per week just to assess and evaluate, you know, from a food security perspective, where folks may be struggling a little bit. And within the Council of Governments, we have an internal work group that spans across senior disability services, our community services program, and our community and economic development department to really assess and evaluate what access to resources we have in terms of not duplicating existing efforts, but being able to really leverage and deploy our resources most effectively, looking at, you know, where folks may have barriers, for example, eating groceries and the like, and where we have connections to other community workers and the like. So overall, moving back around to your original question about Meals on Wheels, we're doing very well. As you can imagine, that connection with that volunteer bringing lunch is even more important now than it has ever been before.
With the additional meals that the program's providing, have you been doing some fundraising to beef up your resources?
Yes, as well as, so direct fundraising, additional grant writing. And we have been, well, with the, I believe it was the CARES Act, additional funding has been released for congregant and dining room meals. So there's some funding support there through the Older Americans Act. And we have actually had a number of folks within the local community just really step up and say, hey, we acknowledge that this is not ordinary and have either contributed for the first time or have contributed in addition to their regular annual contribution. So as well, Meals on Wheels people out of Portland, on behalf of the nutrition programs throughout the entire state, has actually done some grant writing as well. And so they were awarded funding. And we did receive for our local program, a portion of those funds as part of the statewide network. So we're, have been able to access some funds that we normally wouldn't have access to, as well as being able to feel flexible with the existing funding that we have.
Great. I mean, that's always an important program and now more than ever. So that's, that's good news. Do we have any more questions for the COG folks? Zan?
Just a brief question. I was wondering how specifically this pandemic response has affected the census work that the COG is doing coordinating across the tri-county areas?
I'm sorry, Jen, can you repeat that question, the work that we're doing with which?
The census.
Zan was asking about the status of the census operation.
And I think, I think, Ray. Go ahead, Ray.
So I can jump in a little bit. We actually, we do have a census count committee through Council of Governments. They actually are still continuing their work. I believe that they are trying to move forward just as followably as they can, knowing that, you know, it's a little challenging to find people right now. But we are working on some different strategies, such as sending out in the meals boxes and the food boxes that we're working with, getting out in the community, making sure that we put information about the census count in there. We are also working on a strategy to actually send something out to the Medicaid consumers, which is about 12,000 consumers across the three county region that we serve, letting them know about the census count and basically trying to figure out every strategy that we can to find people.
Okay. I know that in the past, the county also, any mailing that we do for our service districts has included notices about the census. I'm sure that that's probably happening as well. I'm just concerned that the, then I quote, hunter numbers.
Commissioners, we would be happy, since Phil's group, Phil Warnock's group is the one who's actually leading that charge, we would be happy to have him give some kind of report out to you if that would be helpful.
Sure, that would be, that would be useful. Thank you.
And I've got a question that's probably appropriate for Phil is the Cascades West Ride Line, non-emergency medical transportation operation. And I can either talk directly to Phil or maybe on the next Council of Governments report have him be available for transportation and census questions.
Commissioner Malone, I'm happy you could pass that information along to Phil as well. I will tell you that we, because we communicate with them regularly, do have some frequent updates about the non-emergency medical transportation. And that is that, of course, right now, a lot of people are not taking rides. The number of rides that they've had through that program has decreased dramatically. I'm sure you can give me actual numbers. I think one of our biggest worries and frustrations is the fact that because these small mom-and-pop businesses, of course, now have huge cuts to their income, they're starting to shutter their doors and starting to close, which is a worry when they start thinking about the fact that eventually this pandemic will end and people will go back about their business. And then we have a cut to the number of people who are able to provide rides because there's always been a bit of a shortage anyway. So Phil is trying to do some very creative things about figuring out ways that we can support the non-emergency medical transportation providers. And actually, we're starting to look into some of the conversations about food delivery. So if we could pay for them to deliver the food boxes, for example, at least it might provide a little bit of income to help keep their doors open and run in the store.
Okay. That was part of my question is repurposing the program to fit our current environment. So that's, that's helpful. We're all, we're all having to be flexible in what, what we do to try to keep things moving forward. So, thank you. Any other questions for our friends at the COG? Hearing none. Thank you for your report and especially thank you for your good work. We will look forward to the next update from you. All right. Next up is the Tsayuslaw folks. It sounds like we have three people who are going to update us. So I don't know, Paul, if you lead things off or you, you tell us who's going to start your report.
Sure. I can start in for the BLM and just give, yeah, I've got three to five minutes. I can start in for the BLM and just give, yeah, I've got three to five minutes worth of updates. I think Donna's probably got the same and please are up for questions. I know the conversation usually gets pretty good. So, I'll start off by saying that I think this is the first meeting I've ever been to where the BLM person is in uniform and Forest Service person is not. So, you know, with coronavirus, we're changing up a little bit here and there. So, I guess I just wanted to, like I said, does my sound okay? You guys can hear me all right? Just want to hit a couple high points on BLM's operations in Benton County, some long-term planning things, you know, short-term, what we're looking at for, you know, the current situation in recreation. And then, again, just leave it to questions for you folks. Yeah, I'm sure like the Benton County staff and the COG before, I just want to take a moment to be just express my pride in our team at the BLM and just how resilient our folks have been in the face of the coronavirus and continuing to do, I would say, a grand majority of the work that the American people expect of us is still happening on the ground every day. Out in the woods in Benton County and certainly in their homes like mine, I'm running a coronavirus academy for a third grader and a coronavirus kindergarten and also running a field office. So, we've been able to, you know, take a couple days to get reoriented and still do a lot of work on behalf of the citizens of the county, residents of the county, and American people in general. So, I think just in terms of probably some of the more pressing things right away about the coronavirus and public land management and certainly recreation, I think that's probably the most public-facing thing that has changed due to coronavirus and social distancing. For us, Mary Peak Field Office, probably the most prevalent change is that we've closed Yaquena Head, which is in Lincoln County outside of Newport. But we've also closed all developed direct sites, so the Altie Falls area, the Day U site, the campground, and technically the trailhead at the mountain bike at Paul Creek is also closed. I guess I'll put the caveat that people are people. And we've known in the past when we've had to close things for lapses in appropriations and things like that, that people do continue to use the sites even if we ask them not to. It's not a priority for our, I would say it's not a priority for our law enforcement to go around and write citations for people who are not heeding those warnings and not obeying the closure, so to speak. But we get out and try to educate people. I think our reports show that the increase and the fatigue from the coronavirus is increasing from the quarantine and that we'll continue to see more people congregating at trailheads and other public lands as the weather gets nicer. So, I think that's pretty fair to say. Shifting gears towards more normal operations for the BLM, if you weren't aware, when the, there was a very large public land piece legislation passed called the Dingle Act earlier this year, this fiscal year. And it designated lots of Wild and Seine River corridors and one of those is in Benton County on the Lobster River, Lobster Creek, depends on how you like to call it. And it's about five miles of that where it's totally blocked up in the BLM land. It's designated for its recreation values. And so, we've got a long-term, we'll do to do a long-term planning process to incorporate that into our management. The area around that, Wild and Seine River, is what we call late succession reserve. Most of the BLM land in Benton County is late succession reserve, which means on a very broad scale, we're trying to put it on a trajectory to grow better habitats for wildlife and fisheries. We see, like I said, even with the current rec closures, lots of popularity for the LT bike system. And we do have, you know, a number of special recreation permit holders and organizations like that that use the Byway and bike trail system and the trail network. So, I think we'll continue to see that. Some of the larger events that were planned to happen there in the spring and in the summer have either been postponed or canceled. You know, that's just kind of par for the course right now. Moving on to our timber and restoration program. So, maybe this is the last time I'll give you an update on timber sales and restoration work under the Northwest Forest Plan, which we managed the land, the BLM lands in Benton County for a couple decades. We've transitioned to a new forest plan that we finalized in 2016. But we are finishing up two timber sales and, you know, one of them more like a harvest land-based type scale Rainbow Ridge just finished up. And then there's another one called the South Beaver Timber Sales, not just more restoration style of thinning. And so, in the foreseeable future for timber and restoration work in Benton County, it'll be all under our 2016 Resource Management Plan. And essentially, our timber sales get, you know, very broadly broken up into two, two ways to think about them. One is our ASQ timber sales, which come off our harvest land base. And, you know, to be honest, most of the harvest land base in the Mary Peak Field Office, which is in Benton County, Polk County, and Lincoln County, most of the harvest land base is in Polk County. I would probably say, just pulling a number out of the air, 90% of the BLM land in Benton County is late succession reserve. And the goal of that is to, again, put those forests on a trajectory for old growth type forests that provide habitat for fish and wildlife. Doesn't mean we don't do timber sales. We still need to, when those, when those plantations were planted, you know, 30 years ago, 50 years ago, it was with the thought that they would be plantation-style forests. And plantation-style forests will not turn into old growth forests without some sort of intervention. And so, that's what our restoration work is geared towards, is spacing out the trees in order to make them grow bigger so they don't just grow together and get sort of prematurely stop growing. And so, we're about to release in the next couple of weeks a final EA for what we call our North 126 Project, which is actually the Sayuslaw Field Office, not the National Forest, but our field office to the south of us, and the Mary Peak Field Office have worked on a landscape-scale plan to do that sort of restoration work for all of the public lands north of Highway 126, essentially up until you reach the Altie. And so, we would be writing decisions out of that document for, could be the next, you know, 10 years of timber sales. And the goal of all of those timber sales, none of them are for our allowable sale quantity or the harvest land base. It's all with the idea of restoring those forests to put them on a trajectory to become old growth forests. So, that document will come out maybe next week or the week after. There'll be a public comment period, a decision issued, and then the way it'll work in the future is that we just write categorical exclusions or the documents that we have. No, I'm sorry, not categorical exclusions, but in BLM, the term is DNA, which stands for a determination of NEPA adequacy. Try not to go too deep into it, but essentially saying, you know, we analyzed what the restoration project was going to look like and now we're implementing it. So, the first project that our field office is going to do under that document won't be for two more years, because it'll be called the C for Miles Timber Sale. And then we do have some plans in the next two or three years to do at least one of the harvest land-based style timber sales in Benton County. The name of that timber sale, we'll probably meet two more times before it gets sold, is called Aloha Trout. And so, we're just at the very initial stages of that. Just two more topics, just talk about transportation in general. We already kind of mentioned the South Fork, Altie Road. We're in the process of working with the Council of Governments on flat planning grants. Speaking of long-term trajectories, trying to come up with a long-term plan and vision for making that road better serve the local public and then also people who are coming from certainly miles away to get to Altie Falls and even some of our timber operators, just to have that be a more sustainable road in the long-term. I've spoken with the, with the commissioners about this in the past. It's a long-term project. We were happy to get that flat grant and feel like at the end of that process, which included, you know, initial scoping meetings with the public a couple, about a month ago, hopefully at the end of the planning grant, the goal is to be in a better place to get the kind of large dollar amounts needed in order to do the work on that, on that road. And that's going to include additional environmental analysis and, you know, if we really want to change it to two lanes all the way through or two lanes plus bike lanes, you start really widening that road and the impacts become more and more important to analyze fully. So, the COG has been super supportive and we're using, they've hired a contractor to do a lot of the work on this planning, David Evans and Associates. Last, certainly not least, and I'm sure Donna will hit on this too, is just moving into the upcoming wildland fire season. You know, BLM locally have a really great relationship with Mike Todi and the rest of his staff on ODF. We are in our Western Oregon operating plan, it's in place this fire season. As, as usual, our number one focus is on firefighter safety and public safety. And I think that's taking on a new, a new meaning with the coronavirus and making sure our firefighters are safe in camp, out on the line, going to and from fires. And I've got a ton of faith in our firefighter community and their ability to plan for what would seemingly be, you know, unplannable. They're, they're professionals at doing this and it's been really reassuring to see the amount of contingency plans they've put in place for the, for the upcoming fire season. So, I'll close there with the BLM part and turn it over to Donna for the Forest Service.
Oh, oh. Paul, why don't we see if there's any questions for you? For you, I know I have one.
And I have one, I have two.
Okay. Go ahead, Annabelle.
My question has to do with the Secure Rule Schools legislature and whether the, what, it's been broken up into the three titles, one, two, and three. Do you have any comments on that?
Yeah. Annabelle, I'll just be honest, I'm not always good at sticking to my talking points. So, let me just, let me tell you what I should about Secure Rule Schools and the RAC as it sits right now. My understanding is that Secure Rule Schools has been reauthorized as it was, you know, as it has been sort of continually for the last couple of years. There's not any significant changes to the structure of the, of the act itself. I know that BLM recently distributed funding under the Secure Rule Schools. I think maybe two weeks ago, I saw a press release saying that something like $28 million has been sent to the Western Oregon counties. And so, that's specifically the, the BLM portion of that. I know that there's some more portion and I can't speak to how those get broken up. Critically for us, we haven't had a RAC, a fully functioning RAC in a couple of years, as you well know. And I will just say, it is, we have made valiant efforts locally to try and make sure that we're getting people nominated to the RACs and doing what we can to try and hold the RACs. As, I mean, I'm speaking to the choir because you do and you know how much work it takes to line up the federal register notice and get out of people's schedules and get a forum and the rest of it. And we just haven't been able to do that. Meanwhile, the Secure Rule Schools funding that the RAC has the authority to make recommendations on spending continues to build. We've been told that that money is not going away. Eventually, when a RAC is put in place and properly chartered and holds a meeting, that they will be able to award that funding or make recommendations on it. And so, we've been keeping a tight line with the types of groups that have in the past applied for the funding, which includes the counties, and telling them, hey, we, we know this money is going to be awarded eventually and made available. So, that's what I got on, on both the RAC and the Secure Rule Schools portion of it. The law continues, it hasn't changed to my understanding. And we're really looking forward locally to the day when the RAC is able to meet and hear proposals from the community about how to best bet those funds.
Thank you, Paul, for the update.
Couple things, Paul. You were asking about your sound quality. It's excellent. Would you, for some of us who aren't good at abbreviations, say what the RAC stands for?
Yeah. It doesn't matter how good the mic is if you don't know the alphabet soup of federal management, I'm sorry. Resource Advisory Council is what the RAC stands for. And that is a, a group of, a group of residents of an area that are appointed by, eventually the White House, to advise local management of federal lands, of BLM lands. And in Western Oregon, it's about fif, it's usually 15 people are on a Resource Advisory Council and they're broken up by interest area. And of interest to the commissioners is that some of the seats on those Resource Advisory Councils are usually, one whole section of the 15 are held for people who hold elected positions like county commissioners. And the goal is to get the group together a couple times a year, tell them, hey, this is what we're working on, on BLM lands. Do you have any, any, you know, advice for us? Kind of, the whole idea is to avoid decision-making and, you know, smoke-filled back rooms and things like that. It's a transparency effort. Unique to Western Oregon is that the RACs also make recommendations on spending the, some of the funds that come out of Secure Rule Schools. They also have an approval rule when the BLM wants to institute recreation fees in order to maintain recreation facilities. Those fees have to be approved by a Resource Advisory Council before the BLM can implement them.
Thank you.
Looking forward to those coming back.
Any other questions for BLM and Paul? All right. Hearing that, we'll move on to the, looks like Donna and Forest Service update.
Thank you. So, again, my name's Donna McLeary and I'm in a temporary assignment here as the Forest Supervisor. Robert Sanchez is on a temporary assignment to our regional office in Portland. That will last for about another month or so and then Robert will be back. And so, I'll share a full, high-level point with you. And then we have the District Ranger that manages Mary Peak, Mary Peak and Michelle Holman, and also Lisa Romano along the line if you have specific questions that, that I can speak to. And I'll just start by following up with our Advisory Council as well is on hold, as you know well, Commissioner. We have submitted our packages, they have to be approved through the Washington Office. We were told this winter they're actually beginning to look at them after a year or more. And so, we're hoping to hear a rap for them so that we can get those positions filled. We do need to have a forum in order to disperse the funds and, and get that, get those projects on the ground. And so, to, um, disperse the funds and, and get that, get those projects on the ground. And so, um, thank you for your continued interest in that functioning group and we hope that we can move forward sometime soon on that. My details start in, uh, the end of January, so the majority of my time has been spent really, uh, working on the COVID-19 issue. Um, we were driven quite a bit by our counties on the coast and just the explosion of use on the dunes and other areas. And so, I, I kind of sent you some copies of our closure orders. Now we are, we're getting those conversations about what does, um, reopening and we're kind of term, term, terming that transitioning. We're, we're about to start looking at how do we transition into recreation being, being more available. And, um, we're doing that in step and consistent with the state guidelines. We're kind of eager to see what comes out with their gathering limits, physical distance, any other kind of mitigation. Um, as a forest, we, we personally are still struggling with, um, the personal protective gear that we don't have enough of, that we still have on order and we're waiting to come in. Um, and more than 50% of our hosts at campgrounds and day use sites are retired folks that are at high risk. And so we really don't have the staffing either. So, so we will, um, we will have our challenges as we try to figure out how we keep employees safe and the public safe as we start finding out ways to reengage and make, make areas available. Those efforts are being coordinated between federal, state, and local counties that's being led by, uh, Oregon State Park, um, Office of Recreation, and the Governor at Office of Natural Resource Policy. So, um, we're having regular conversations. It's, it's really important at the forest level that whether it's state park or a forest park or a BLM site, the public doesn't really know the difference. And so it's really important that we're coordinated in our message and, and in our efforts. And so, that's really just our, that's been our focus, um, right now. Um, I'll turn it over to Michelle to talk about some specifics of activities in, in Benton County related to, um, what she has. She's the District Ranger for the Central Coast.
Good morning. Did you hear me okay?
Uh, yes.
Okay, awesome. I, um, I wanted to, um, say that it's been a while since I've been able to talk to you, um, probably in the years and it's good to see your face and be able to connect with everyone. Uh, the big piece, so the big piece of, uh, you know, most of what we think of when we look at the district and, um, uh, Benton County is Mary's Peak. And, uh, right now in Mary's Peak, as you know, the gate's closed. Um, and we are, um, we are, um, looking at how to transition that and opening the gate and trying not to get, you know, just a flood of, a flood of rich, uh, people recreating and not being able to keep their distance. And so we're thinking about things like that. Um, I wanted to let you know that the Mary's Peak Alliance is a really strong force from Mary's Peak. They are an incredibly strong partner. They have at least 30, um, certified interpreters in that group that, you know, are up on the peak several times every summer. The big event for Mary's Peak Alliance at the peak is, um, the fifth grade tours that they put up there where they bring buses and buses from local Benton County schools and give their interpretation. And, and some of those students say that the first time they've actually, you know, been out in the woods and are out into, um, wild land, so to speak. And so it's a really great, um, great, um, event. Uh, and, um, at the same time, um, um, right, we had camps for them this year. They didn't get to go up to peak. So that is firmly several hundred kids. Um, what we are in the process of working on, the Mary's Peak Alliance, um, in particular, is a video of, um, of that particular, um, interpret, interpretive body of interpretive information so that we can, um, provide that to graders and also use it as a tool on the Mary's Peak Alliance, um, website. And so we're pretty excited about that. Uh, it, it should be done. I think it should be done by the end of the month. And so, um, I think that's going to be a great tool. Mary's Peak Stewardship Group is still up and running. They're, they are, you know, they are, um, working on restoration, particularly stream restoration in, up in and around, um, Benton County. Um, and so you can, you can, they get, you know, anywhere from, you know, $60,000 to $100,000 each year towards, uh, restoration, um, in the Mary's Peak Stewardship area. Um, as, um, as Paul mentioned, uh, wildfire response, we are looking at that. Um, we do also have strong relationships with Mike Todi, um, with Solomond, um, Oregon Department of Forestry, um, for wildfire response. Uh, we do have, um, uh, risk assessments and other types of documentation that talks to how we are going to, um, lower the risk of spreading the virus throughout fire camps, although we recognize our firefighters will probably have to carry a higher level of risk in terms of the virus. Um, uh, you mentioned Title II dollars, our Title II, um, ours, um, like Donna said, that we just haven't been able to get through those approvals through, uh, USDA and then on to the White House. Uh, right now there's about $52,900 sitting in Title II funds for Benton County through the Sikes National Forest. Um, and then the, the last thing I wanted to mention is that, um, we are, uh, the EPA is continuing to follow through the deeper process on, um, their communication site up on Mary's Peak. Um, they expect to release, um, that DEA this summer and, uh, they're working out kind of the public needing piece of that. Um, from a, from a vegetation management standpoint, kind of our timber program, um, we, um, we have pretty much finished up all of our commercial spending on Mary's Peak and the meadow restoration and it's looking, um, I don't know if folks have been up there lately, but the openings are looking really good. I'm really kind of, I'm really proud of that project and, and, um, and what we've done up there. We are moving, um, we have, right now we're on the North Fort Smith Planning Area, which is in, um, Douglas County. But our next, after we finish in that area, we are moving into the Big Elk and Heartland, um, area for planning. Um, as Paul mentioned, most of our area is also a lakes and sexual reserve. And so typically those look something like, um, well, they're commercial spending. And so, um, we've already been into Big Elk and Heartland in the past. This is our second time in probably 20 years that we'll be looking at that. And, um, um, right now we have some contractors up in that area doing standings. So, um, yeah, I think, um, that's really all I wanted to touch on, um, and, and let you have, have a question.
Any, any questions?
Thank you, thank you.
All right, uh...
No questions, thank you.
We, in our packet, we've got a, a fair amount of information about, uh, closures and, um, potential reopenings. You touched on that a little bit. I guess, uh, I've heard the term coordinate, uh, used quite a bit and I, I, that's, uh, critical. Uh, we got a report from State Parks last week about, uh, a timetable for reopening state parks for day use that's, um, coming in. Uh, at least the proposal was to, uh, look at opening things up by the middle of May. So, uh, uh, I forget who, who said that, uh, people don't care whose park it is, uh, that it's important at, uh, dates and, and, uh, rules are as consistent as we can through the various, uh, ownerships of our recreation, recreational areas. So I, I would definitely, definitely emphasize, uh, that and, uh, as we're, as we get into better weather, uh, people have been, some people felt like they were really cooped up and, uh, it's important when we do open things up that it's, you know, controlled fashion. So we don't have, what was that, March 21st, uh, spring break on the coast that, uh, I think a lot of these closures are a reaction, uh, to losing control of, uh, areas. So, uh, is...
Yeah, I think that's why, I think that's why that we are, we also are trying to use the transitioning term because we want to be able to have enough control that as we open, descend, we see the spread and things change, that we have the ability to, to pull back in if we need to. We can have some flexibility and it just doesn't become the gate is open, the light is on and, and, and we get flooded, which will likely happen anyway, but we're going to do our best to strategize. How can we have some control and how do we, um, have that flexibility so that we can adapt as we need to? Of course, in concert with the communities and the parks and, and the governor, whatever kind of direction that we need, can, and between BLM and the Forest Service, it's just really important that we're really in lockstep with it.
Yeah, I, just to add on to that, and Donna and Michelle spoke about it more eloquently than I did, but I think in terms of that coordination piece, you know, we can certainly provide to the county, if you don't have it already, our recreation supervisor for all of Northwest Oregon. So if your, if your recreation staff is interested in knowing, you know, what it is that we're planning on doing locally, um, Missouri Bend is pretty close to Benton County. I think it's just on the other side of the county line, um, and LC Falls. I think the, the most sensible approach that I've heard is, is really encouraging people to recreate locally and really discouraging people from traveling long distances to go to places that, you know, it's not a good idea. We're, we're not interested in creating melting pots on the coast or other places like that. So I, I guess at this point I would, I would speculate that a lot of our plants, though we don't have a date for when we think they're going to start opening, if mid-May is what you're hearing from the state parks, maybe we'll start hearing that too. But I'm guessing that our approach is going to be to open more of our smaller, local parks first, um, local locations like Missouri Bend or LC Falls and, and not create, uh, you know, for lack of a better term, like an attractive nuisance. You know, if we open up Yaquinah Head, I, I have no interest in, you know, hosting 3,000 people there in one day. And that's just a typical summer day for us. And so I, I think we need to be judicious about our approach and, um, we want to be working in, in concert with, uh, the cities and the counties that are also going to be slowly opening up parks. So I'll pass on our contact information to Teresa so you guys can pass it on to your recreation people as well.
Great.
That's great. That'd be really helpful. And I, I think, uh, the decision judiciously is important.
The, the word I think...
Teresa, that's a nice question.
The word I heard, uh, maybe should be the start of the sentence is, these are conditional openings and that, uh, that the state parks, the, the term, uh, day use, day use only, uh, was, was used and, and, uh, like you say, the smaller, uh, less likely to get overwhelmed, um, sites, start with those and, um, see, see how things go. But, um, coordination is...
Yeah, and I'll just say it because I feel like I need to say it every, it's part of my duty as a, a manager and a leader, and I know it is, is for you as well as, as commissioners and, and Donna and Michelle is, people may make the decision to break quarantine and go do things, um, even if it's ill-advised, right? That's people's, I suppose they're, they're right. Um, but we have employees who are sub-subjected to that decision at those places. And so, um, that's my primary concern. I want people to be able to recreate, get fresh air and everything like that. But, um, I'm not interested in providing locations, um, and, and serving, um, providing those services to public if we can't keep our employees safe. And that's really, to me, the thing that'll, um, drive our decision-making about when to open gates and welcome the public back is whether or not I feel like my employees are safe. And if they're not safe, then recreation like that just isn't essential in the way other things are essential. And, and our people didn't sign up to be on the front lines of a public health crisis and we don't pay them wages that reflect that or anything like that. And so, um, I continue to drive that as my decision-making and to my leadership and, um, and I'm happy to voice that opinion anytime someone turns on my microphone.
Great.
So, but I'll, I'll leave the, the duration. Uh, you don't need my speeches in, in your commission.
Okay. Anything, uh, else for the Forest Service folks? If not, uh, thank, thank you for your inform, information and, and, uh, look forward to a reasonable, uh, transition here.
And I really liked the word conditional opening. Uh, I think that's a, a good context.
Well, and, and the, the sequence is important. Conditional comes first and then opening. And, uh, uh, our messaging needs to be, uh, consistent and clear and, and that, uh, we're, we're not back to business, we're not back to anywhere close to business as usual, but, uh, we're, we're trying, we're trying our best to kind of thread the needle between, uh, protecting people and, uh, having recreational opportunities. So, thank you.
Yep. Thank you all.
Uh, next up is our consent calendar. Um, item six. And I would look, uh, I would entertain a motion?
Go move.
I, I think, I think I can lip read Annabelle and she said second. Um...
She's nodding her head yes.
All, all in favor of the motion, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Um, motion carries. Uh, we are now to item seven, Emergency Response Policy Team. Uh, first up is, uh, our wonderful Health Department, Charlie and Danielle.
Charlie and Danielle, before you get started, this is Joe Kirby. I just want to highlight for those folks who are on the phone waiting for a couple of topics, that under section 7.4, Discussion on Miscellaneous Policy Issues, that's where the conversation will occur regarding the hygiene center request as well as the safe camp request. So stay tuned for 7.4 if that's why you're on the phone today. Charlie and Danielle, it's all yours.
Thanks, Joe. I'll go ahead and get started. Um, so Health Department is, um, I've got our Health Department priorities out a little bit late this week. I did send them out this morning. Um, the biggest change you'll see is we've taken a few things off which were, that were completed, um, mostly the mass sheltering plan, um, and the ongoing alternate, alternate care type plan. Um, the other change that you'll see is we've added a communicable disease epidemiology branch to the Health to the Health Department priorities in light of the expanded testing. So you'll see those changes in the Health Department priorities for this week. As an update to the mass shelter plan, they did get the first draft of that reviewed. There were some changes that needed to be made. So hopefully we'll have final draft out by the end of the day today for the mass sheltering plan. The rest are still things that we're working on, ongoing, things like the long-term care facilities, the homeless service provider, hotel motel sheltering that we're waiting for three months. Some of those tasks we'll just keep on there, ongoing.
Danielle, there's a lot of feedback on your audio. Do you have any idea why that might be?
It sounds like the computer speaker might be on.
It could have been Charlie.
Oh, okay.
Ask her if they're in the same room.
No, Charlie's sitting next to me and had his mic on, so he turned it off now.
Great.
Sorry about that.
Do we have any questions for Danielle?
One more update.
Okay.
The behavioral health plan is in the final, final stages. Ashley Telamontes is working closely with Kelly Losi and Lilia at the JIC to get some marketing and communication out about that so we can start implementing our new programming related to the pandemic response. We're working on, with OHA and IHA, to figure out billing and funding for that. But at this point, we're just going to move forward with providing those services and figure out the billing and funding on the backend. We feel like it's really important to get the services started and we can figure out the other steps at the end.
Any questions for Danielle?
Not at the time. Thank you, Danielle.
Charlie, now you can turn your microphone on.
Yeah, it's a lesson learned. We've got, Danielle's got hers off. We're actually not next to each other, we're far apart, but it's a big actually room. So lesson learned. No, nothing really. The addition of the epidemiology part, that's ongoing work, we recognize that. It's just been written into the priority document this week. So no real changes in activities there. Just the ongoing, you know, the ongoing work and coordination that we're doing with OHA, with Governor's Office around metrics and measures that will be added to the statewide opening plan.
Okay. I had a question on the trace program that's been going the last couple of weekends. When do we get some information back on that testing?
So they are finishing up the weekend's outreach activities today. And again, they were targeting about 480 tests over the weekend and through the first couple of days. And then it will take, they're around five, six days for those tests to be completed. I'm not sure what the timeline beyond that for OSU to begin data analytics. They may wait until they've got a couple of weeks of data. I'm not exactly sure what their timeline will be. We're doing, training up some extra contact tracers this week. So we have, we're probably overstaffed a bit, but not sure how many positives we'll get out of this. So we're doing a little just-in-time training this week to be for receiving those extra 500 or so test results. The end of this week or probably more likely next Monday.
But it sounds like you are continuing to staff up on contact tracing staff? And what's...
Yes, absolutely. We're making sure that we have coverage and we have enough people trained. You know, we're using health specialists that are already trained in contact investigations on airborne illnesses. We've got a couple of other people that we've repurposed. And then after a couple of weeks of trace and after a couple of weeks of seeing how much more testing there is in the medical community, we'll have a better handle on just exactly how many people we need. You know, quite honestly, contact tracing to this point is, you know, it's complex. It takes quite a bit of work for each one. But because of the isolation that most people are under, the actual number of contacts per case is pretty low with a couple of exceptions of people who have been working and been around a lot of other people. And, you know, it's sort of reinforcing that people are staying out of circulation as most of them are able to say, really, the one or two people in there.
All right. Thank you for that. Do we have any more questions for Charlie or Danielle?
Not at the time. Thank you, Charlie.
All right. I've got an idea, Charlie. Why don't you take a couple of days off this week?
Great suggestion. I will say, oh, yeah, that is the plan. Thank you very much. It feels like, you know, we're at a stage now, we've got pieces in place, you know, what's going to happen in a couple of weeks. We've got a busy time next week, so I'm going to try to do that. Thank you.
Great. That's, I think you were overdue on that. But I'm glad you managed to schedule that. And thank you for your valiant efforts here in keeping us on track.
Happy to do it. Thank you.
All right. EOC update? Do we have Brian Lee?
Yes. So thank you, Commissioner Malone here. So just a couple of EOC updates. We're still emphasizing our safety focus here and just ensuring everyone exercises all the appropriate social distancing and safety protocols we've put forward. And that mainly is just to support us not getting overly fatigued and lax and just to keep people healthy. So that's still one of our number one emphasis and priorities here in the EOC. We're still looking at our staffing model. And then we've really begun our, a look at our quote-unquote kind of reopening plan. We're just getting a draft together because the governor still has to put out her draft reopening plan. So we just want to get a template in place. So then when she puts out more guidance, we can start developing more guidance just so we're all in sync and in lockstep moving forward. And then we still have our ongoing focus to support public health and their priorities as well as response in case we get a sudden uptick. And, you know, I know we've said it before, I just, you know, want to highlight, and Charlie mentioned this a bunch on different calls. This is really the first time ever we've seen a disaster this big. There's never been a nationwide disaster like this apart from some of the world wars or the Spanish flu back in 1918. So this is really kind of a monumental thing. And with that, and thinking about our EOC stacking and our model is, you know, what are the impacts going to be for the next three to 18 months on our staff here in the EOC as well as our priorities and focus as well as the community? So we're really trying to develop thoughtful plans like the Mass Care and Sheltering Plan and non-congruent housing and the reopening plan to make sure we're using resources appropriately. Because we're really in this marathon and not a sprint. You know, Charlie throws out the loose number as well as a lot of the other health officials at the state level of three to 18 months we could be in this. We know it won't be over here in three weeks. So we could be dealing with this until we get a vaccine. So for 18 months, we could be standing up the COC or supporting operations from the Health Department, contact tracing, et cetera. So it could really be a big lift as we move forward. And I've been telling folks in the EOC and some department directors, we're really in what we would call the second and third order effect phase. So the initial shock of the pandemic isn't over, but has run its course a little bit. And now we're kind of in a standby mode to see what happens next. But now we're starting to see the effects on the economy, the effect on businesses and people's mental health and everything else. And it's kind of an unprecedented situation that's really hard to anticipate, all the different things and resource requests we're going to start seeing. So I just wanted to say that on the EOC side, we're starting to outline those plans as well as outlining what our estimates on possible resource requests are going to be as this incident goes on and on and we keep spending more and more funding. So that's kind of our EOC update right now. It's just focusing on thoughtful planning and moving forward on the reopening framework and some other core plans that we want to have established here as we roll into fire season.
Okay, any questions for Brian? Well, I had a couple of comments. I appreciate your using resources wisely comment. That's critical for all parts of our operation. And we don't know what resources we have to work with exactly. And seem to be getting more and more demands that are outside our normal budgeting. And so it's, we're all kind of in uncharted waters. And appreciate that you folks are able to lift your heads up a little bit and look out, like you say, three to 18 months, not knowing how long this effort is going to go forward. You didn't mention the economic development piece. Can you talk a little bit about how Kate Porche and her crew are fitting into the EOC?
Yes. So just to chime in on that a little bit, because we're focused on the second and third order effects, we've transitioned our operations section chiefs and focus there from the fire department. And they did an amazing job with leadership and everything else for these first, I'm going to say six weeks, six to eight weeks. And now Kate Porche is actually the operations section chief with a huge, huge emphasis on economic development and recovery. So we really appreciate having her onboard to start bringing that perspective in as well and anticipating those needs as well as the Health Department. So now we have even more of a partnership with the economic development side and the Health Department side. So I really think we're going the right direction with those contact points. And Kate as the operations section chief.
Well, I really appreciate the flexibility that you're showing in kind of redefining the mission and your efforts regularly in uncharted waters and trying to create a map of unknown territory. So this sounds really promising. And I was glad to see Dave Busby's name as the person that you're working with, with the city. Because I know there's been a lot of joint efforts in training in the past. So as we transition into the next phase, making sure we have the right people in place. So...
Absolutely. I agree.
Brian?
Zan, Zan here. I was wondering if you could just give us a rough number for the average staff count at the EOC now?
I'm looking around the room right now. So there's probably about 25 to 30 people spread out. I know upstairs the JIC has about four people. There's seven people in the room I'm sitting in. And then another, at most 10, give or take, in the operations room.
Okay, thank you. Just trying to get a scale for how much we've shrunk. Appreciate it.
Yeah, actually, I'd say we've shrunk about 25% or more, maybe more like 33% here from last month.
Brian, this is Annabelle. Thank you much for the work you're putting into it. And I really want to make sure that everybody that has participated gets thanked. And I think that, that I really appreciate the vigor with what you're doing. Some people are trying to, you know, get back on, get back to normal. And I just think we have to be cautious about how fast we move in that direction.
Thank you, Commissioner. And I completely agree. We got to do it based on science and knowledge and be responsible, but also consider the economy and the community. So it's a tough balancing act. And I think we're all sort of in this together moving forward.
Okay. Well, thank you for your update, Brian. And it sounds like things are on the right track and redefining your mission kind of on a daily basis. So thank you for your considerable efforts. If there's nothing else for Brian, we'll move on to 7.3, Emergency Ordinance Regarding Vehicle Camping. Greg Verrett, and this is a follow-up from our meeting last week.
Right. Good morning, Commissioners and everybody else. Greg Verrett, Benton County Community Development Director. And I'll present the main bit about the emergency ordinance on vehicle camping at religious institutions. But also, part of the team and ready to jump in and correct or add to what I've said are Rebecca Taylor and Julie Arena and Sarah Hartstein, I believe, are all on the meeting as well. So last Thursday, we presented to the Board of Commissioners the concept of an emergency ordinance to authorize vehicle camping at religious institutions. This would be up to three vehicles per religious institution. Look, it's outside of city limits in the county. This is per state statute that allows counties to do that. The consensus from the Board of Commissioners at that discussion last week was to proceed with a public hearing on May 5th to consider an emergency ordinance that would be effective for, that would go into effect that day and be effective for 60 days. And then an intermediate ordinance that would become effective on the expiration of that emergency ordinance and then would have a sunset date of its own, recognizing that we're adopting these ordinances in less, much less than the desired public engagement process that we would typically do and would want to do in this case for a permanent ordinance. The consensus at that time was to set the sunset date for December 31st, 2021. The ordinance could be repealed earlier if we get a new ordinance in place or ready to go earlier than that date. There were concerns raised by the Sheriff's Office, as you'll recall, about, as I understood it, that enabling camping at some locations may create a belief of legitimacy about camping at other locations that are actually not approved. And also some uncertainty about whether landlord-tenant laws would apply to the religious institutions that are hosting these vehicles. institutions that are hosting these vehicles. And that those items could make law enforcement's job more difficult. We recognize that and don't necessarily have solutions to all of those points. One thing I will point out is that enforcement of this code, we believe, would be by county code compliance rather than by law enforcement. So whether a religious institution is failing to comply with the provisions of this code, that would be left to code compliance to deal with most directly. However, if there are violations of other law by people who are camping at the churches, of course, that would still be potentially a law enforcement responsibility. We, I'll point out a couple of tweaks to the code that we've made since that last discussion. One is that we were proposing an eight-foot separation between vehicles. Sarah pointed out that the CDC has guidelines for camping sites when camping is the only option for people available, to have 12 feet of separation. So we worked that into the code, requiring 12-foot separation between vehicles. The other point is that we are fine-tuning the definition of vehicle. So still working on the wording of that. We'll get it finalized before the draft gets posted today. But we want to make sure that it's clear that the concept of vehicle in this instance includes, in addition to cars, trucks, RVs, also includes a micro shelter as that term is, well, it's not really, that term doesn't have a specific definition, but that it's a unit that is built to the standard that's been put forth by the City of Provalence. And also to clarify that the definition of vehicle does not include tents. So that's the distinction that we want to have clear, or that I want to have clear if I'm going to be asked to interpret this and enforce it. So that's the code as we put it forward. The discussion today that I want to be sure we have is to get to consensus about whether it's appropriate in this code to limit the number of people. So we'll limit the number of vehicles to three per institution, but it's also necessary to limit the total number of people. Micro shelters have a maximum capacity of two. Vehicles, of course, could range from a couple, one person, a couple people up to potentially many if it's a large RV or school bus, for example. So we put in the draft that we distributed, put forward two options. First option would be to not have a standard limit on the number of people, but just the provision that the county may impose a limit on a site if there's a nuisance or a threat to public health, safety, or welfare by the number of people that are on the site. The second option is, I believe, one that Commissioner Roger will put forth of 10 people maximum per site, and the county may further limit that number if there's a nuisance or threat to health, safety, or welfare. The planning and health team discussed, and our recommendation would be to go with option A, to not have a standardized limit, but just be able to impose a limit if, site by site, if necessary. And the reasons for that recommendation are, the examples we found from other jurisdictions who have implemented this prior to Benton County, some going back a few years, none of them seems to include a limit on the number of people, at least of the example that we found. A limit of 10 could impinge on some family units. The requirement for 12 feet of separation that comes from the CDC guidelines seems to do away with the need for that, for the 10-person limit from the perspective of social, their physical distancing requirement. And finally, that problems, if problems do arise due to too many people on a given site, we can address those through case-by-case dialogue with the religious institution. So that's our recommendation. Obviously, it's for your discussion. And then there is a secondary question about who should have the authority for determining that nuisance or threat to health, safety, and welfare. Should it be the county administrator, the community development director, somebody else in the county organization? Registration of these sites will be through the Community Development Department. Code compliance resides in community development, so there is that angle to it. On the other hand, this is not a land use decision, it's not a land use code, so it is a little bit outside of our normal realm of enforcement. It's not, also not subject to building code. So those are the items I wanted to, sure to get the board's direction on as we finalize the ordinance and post it prior to next week's public hearing. So, sorry, I talked for quite a while there. I'll stop and let you either ask questions or jump into discussion.
Zan?
Thank you, thank you, Greg. I am fine with option A. I think it might put a little bit more pressure on either you or Joe to be the limiting factor if there are unsafe conditions at a particular location. But I think that that will, is a more robust approach up beyond the COVID-19 situation that we find ourselves in right now. And I would point out that number seven still says eight feet, it doesn't say 12 feet. So I would, you might want to check on that. So, and as far as the authority goes to make that call, I think that you made a case, Greg, for keeping it at community development. The other folks in the county that might be called in on such a case might be environmental health or public health. And if we want to integrate input from multiple departments, then perhaps staff authority should reside with the county administrator.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna pitch in, and Greg, you can cringe, but I'm gonna, my recommendation would be that it remain with community development director. Just knowing that when we deal with enforcement issues, there is an awful lot of conversation, communication, back and forth with code enforcement officer between Greg, oftentimes myself, oftentimes the building inspector. To have the oversight of this particular ordinance reside with the supervisor of the code enforcement officer seems to be the most efficient location in terms of time.
Commissioners, I'd also like to weigh in on this particular topic. Whatever you decide, I do believe that it should be not just one person. It should say, for example, the community development director and designee. Reason I say that is, in the era of coronavirus, we're never quite certain who's going to be exposed, who might become sick. And so I do think that we need to identify several positions, if you will, that have the authority to make that decision.
And we do that fairly frequently in our code. We, I guess the classic example is the sheriff or his or her designee. So that's a pretty easy thing to insert into the code ordinance.
All right. And so the idea is to get the language firmed up by, before the end of the day today, so we have the seven-day notice to bring it back at our May 5th board meeting. Is that the, is that the plan?
Correct. We need to post the draft code on our websites right after this meeting, if possible.
Okay.
So, yes, I want to, I want to know, I would like to know your consensus about option A or option B and county administrator, community development director, or somebody else.
Okay, I'm comfortable with option A. It seems like it gives you a little more flexibility and which, when we don't know exactly how this is going to play out, seems reasonable. And to have the enforcement start out with the community development folks, yourself is the first name listed, seems like a good idea. Commissioner Moon? Annabelle?
Likewise.
Okay.
I don't say more, I might have an agreement.
All right.
Okay, very good.
Does it?
This is, this is Lynn McKee. I just wanted to just throw a little thought out there because I deal with campers. And one of my biggest challenges, as Vance Wells knows, is once they're in, it's very hard to get them out. And, you know, there's a moratorium on eviction for 90 days with the governor. So it's just something to be aware of, that once they're settled in, I've had to forklift people out, I've had to, you know, nag, force, the sheriff doesn't do evictions. So you are kind of on your own to facilitate those. And it's something that I find very challenging. So, so anyway, just something to be kept in the back of your mind as you move forward with this.
And I think, Lynn, that's a, that's a great piece of information because I think really what that goes to is what under Sheriff Rithler was talking about last week, when the sheriff might get called out for a vehicle camper that's overstaying its welcome on a church property. The question that will begin, that the Sheriff's Office will face is whether there is a mandatory 30-day notice requirement that has to go, or whether this particular vehicle camping ordinance is outside the landlord-tenant laws. So the problem, I suppose theoretically, of how to move a vehicle camper off property will reside with the property owner. In this case, it would be a church. However, Benton County will be brought in tangentially as it relates to law enforcement when a property owner throws up his or her hands and says we can't get them off.
Thank you, Vance. I appreciate you, you're speaking on that again as well, because I do see an issue, again, it's going to be a Sunday morning where you're going to have a bunch of people at church or cars there, and we're going to get the call. And it's not going to be code enforcement, it's going to be Sheriff's Office. You need to go up there and deal with this issue, and we're going to be stuck with trying to figure out who belongs, who doesn't, who's been there too long, and we're not going to be able to. And it's, it's going to cause problems. Again, I'm just repeating myself, so I appreciate it.
Thank you. Anything else for Greg?
I do just want to just add one other thing about option A. If the, if a church opts to use the micro shelters in place, then that by default will limit the number of individuals on the property to six because it's two per shelter. So hypothetically, if you have a church with two micro shelters and then it has a kind of a rotating spot for a vehicle, chances are, I would guess, pretty slim that a property is going to experience very many people actually on site. I must say, roll up with that bus and all bets are off.
Right. Sarah, Julie, or Rebecca, anything you want to add, anything more we need?
I think you did a great job of, this is Sarah. Greg, you did a great job of presenting the code and some of the pieces that we've been working through to try to make this happen. And I think I just wanted to add that, you know, you know, we would still be providing religious institutions with guidance around COVID-19 prevention, which would also limit individuals at this time that would be located on the church property. I also want to say that we've had a lot of conversations about putting a packet of recommendations for churches together in addition to public health, but along the lines of resources available in the community, how to get individuals connected and proper screening to make sure that they are really knowing what they're getting into by inviting a guest onto their property in this way and have the, their resources to kind of help wrap around the individual to get them connected to services.
I think that's a great idea, Sarah, to put down on paper the potential resources and kind of the rules that they need to be observing, kind of to flesh out the ordinance to just what, what the expectations are for allowing this. So I would be all in favor of some kind of guidelines that go with the ordinance. Anything else for Greg and his crew? Hearing none. We will move on to 7.4, miscellaneous policy issues. And there are several here.
Commissioners, this is really the catch-all part of the meeting. So I do have five items to either pose for you or just update you on. I'm going to go ahead and list the order of those so staff has an idea regarding the batting. What would you call that? Vance, the batting?
Order.
Order, thank you. Vance is a huge baseball fan, you can tell Joe is not, but I still like Vance despite that. So the first item up is the hygiene center request. The second item up would be the safe camp request. We'll touch a little bit more on number three, which is the reopening conversation. Then we'll talk briefly about our Public Service Week recognition. And then lastly, we'll talk about guidance for the Benton Community Foundation relative to the money that the county has decided to contribute towards assisting nonprofits. So that's the order for this morning. So Sarah and/or whoever else is helping you on this topic, the hygiene center is up now.
Hi, this is Sarah. I just want to check in to make sure, Danielle, you didn't want to take the lead on this conversation?
Oh, Sarah, I'm good with you starting, go ahead.
Okay, thanks. So you have a proposal before you to help extend the funding to maintain the Food and Hygiene Center that is on the property of the men's cold weather shelter. When, you know, the governor issued the stay-at-home order, the men's shelter staff made a decision to open up the shelter and instead of using it as a cold weather shelter, using it as a food and hygiene center because they were unable to maintain the proper physical distancing within. So this hygiene center is currently providing showers, laundry, daily meals, and basic, basic medical and basic needs supplies to 25 campers that are currently at the BMX Park and individuals who are surrounding encampments. This is really a critical resource for our community right now, given that there's really no other access to shower facilities, toileting, hand washing, and laundry services. And so the proposal in front of you is to extend those services from May 15th to June, June 15th.
Oh, Zan?
Thank you, Sarah.
I'm very grateful to the men's cold weather shelter, Sean, and all of your crew for this. You pivoted really fast. But I wanted to know whether this is something that is reimbursable expense in the context of FEMA or not? That is more on the financing end of things that I have a question. And then at what point? Okay. And then at what point will it come back before us for reconsideration and extension?
Brian, can you answer the reimbursement aspect?
Absolutely. So the short answer is no, it is not reimbursable. The longer answer, that's only slightly longer, is that the intention of FEMA reimbursables under the public assistance grant is geared towards things basically that are there on a temporary basis. So when I say temporary, I mean like if we rented a shower trailer and brought that in, as long as it's ADA compliant and it's open to the whole community, that is something that is reimbursable. But any permanent installation or anything like that is not reimbursable. And when Don Dale and I dug in deep into all the grant guidance, the discussion of hygiene stations was clearly portable hygiene stations that are ADA compliant and more related to alternate care sites, which in its definition, they had a whole 20-page guidance on that, is medical sheltering. So if we were setting up a medical field hospital separate and it requires portable handwashing stations or portable showers, those are all reimbursables. And the same goes for if we were doing mass care, mass sheltering, say during a wildfire, those shower trailers that we rent would be. But installing a permanent shower, installing some additional things like that are not covered. And the idea is that FEMA doesn't want people to use a disaster or grant to make permanent changes. They have a whole separate grant program for that called the Hazard Mitigation Grant Program. So no, the hygiene centers from all of our GECs and ASPS could state they are not reimbursable.
This is one of those examples where it seems like, I understand why the rents are the way they are, but it does not make sense. This isn't new construction to do anything, it's just using an existing facility and existing resources in a different way and in a way that wouldn't be used otherwise. So yeah, it's frustrating.
Yeah, we, this is Danielle. We had a long conversation about this yesterday with some pretty good debate in the operations center yesterday. And what we talked about was the options of trying to get FEMA reimbursement and formulating this as a non-congregate shelter option, knowing that that's going to slow down any decisions that can be made because that FEMA reimbursement pre-authorization has not been made. We're still waiting for the one from last week. So knowing that the timeline for this is relatively short in terms of the funding that the men's cold weather shelter still has, it's going to last about another two and a half weeks. So the question was, do commissioners want us to move this forward with the kind of shoestring hope that we could formulate this as a non-congregate shelter ask for FEMA reimbursement? Or do we just want to move forward with the decision, knowing that we have about two and a half weeks until the funding runs out and that hygiene center is effectively closed? So that's the ask today partially is, do we want to reach out to FEMA to see if we can do this pre-authorization as a non-congregate shelter option? Or do we just want to move forward and fund it, given the short timeline?
Commissioners, Joe Kirby, I'd like to just interject some additional information for your consideration. I did have a conversation last night with Mark Shepherd, the Corvallis City Manager. Mark and I were discussing a number of these requests that are coming forward to the commissioners. And based on my conversation with Mark, I do believe that the city has a potential interest in assisting with funding towards this request. They do not meet until next week and Mark could not commit to assisting with the funding. But based on my conversation, I do believe that the city does have a potential interest in helping with some short-term funding in this regard. Once again, I don't have a formal commitment for the city to do that, but I do know that they have an interest in assisting.
And I shared this a little bit with Joe earlier and something Joe and I and Mary are going to work on is a nice, good process to make sure we bring the proper asks, policy level asks and funding requests to the BOC moving forward. One thing, whether we choose to wait for FEMA notification, which as Danielle mentioned, could take two to three weeks realistically, or just go ahead and fund it unrelated to FEMA reimbursement. Moving forward, for the most part, even though we're doing our due diligence, we shouldn't probably make a lot of decisions based on only FEMA reimbursement, just because again, this is unprecedented times. We're going to do everything we can to get as much money back, but we might be spending a lot more than we're going to get back. And then thinking about this ask too, one thing we don't have visibility on, and I know this ask is actually relatively small, but moving forward, I don't know what the asks are for hygiene centers out in rural areas, but if we're focusing all of our concentration on the city of Corvallis, I really want to also focus on those rural areas. And when we reached out to them, they basically said, "They're fine, they don't need anything." But I think there's a lot of, we don't know what we don't know out there. We don't know what the business asks are going to be, we don't know what our future spending and resource allocations are going to be as we move forward. But I think they're going to start stacking up significantly in terms of the funding asks for both nonprofit and profit and other organizations in the community. So I just want to bring that to your guys' attention as we start looking at budgets in the next biennium and the future of this for 18 months. Are we prepared to do this hygiene center for an extended length of time if this incident keeps going for that extended length of time and all the other factors that are coming in? Because right now, a lot of our asks and what makes it up to our discussions are, because we've been in the response phase, are the first come, first served. And I just want to make sure that there's an equitable process for all the asks that are out there to be put on the table and then us make decisions. But that just, it also creates a lag time in our ability to respond and do things and hampers our nimbleness. I just want to throw that there, more of a word of caution as we start dropping non-reimbursable money especially into different buckets, how we start looking at it and framing it and who we're helping and how we're helping them. I definitely am supportive of the hygiene center concept and the need for it for this public health emergency. I'm just saying, as we move forward, we got to be able to also pull back on it and pull the policies out. And I know that's sort of where the city's coming from too, is they want to solve this COVID-19 emergency problem, but not solve the other larger societal issues that are attached to it. So we're all trying to balance it again, we're all trying to work through some money together. I just want to throw it out there on the EOC side, we'll make sure whatever you guys want to happen, we will support and move forward with. But we're going to have a cleaner process of how we bring these things up to you when it comes to funding and pulling money from the county funds. So I just wanted to say that.
Okay, thank you for that. And my, you've kind of answered my concerns about FEMA reimbursement is that's a theory and I think the paycheck, the PPP plan shows that there may be a significant amount of money that goes away fairly quickly. And I can see the theoretical 75% reimbursement rate getting smaller, maybe a lot smaller because of all the demands that are going to come in there. So I guess I had a couple thoughts and on the cold weather shelter, what's the percentage split on funding between the city and the county?
Commissioner Malone, I believe, I'll have to go back and check the agreement. I don't have that in front of me, but I do believe that we were contributing like amounts. But I'll have to go back and look up that agreement. I can't answer that for you at this time.
Going from memory, it seemed like it was 50/50, but and I guess I would, from the timeline, we can, if we want to go forward, Sean, are you saying it was a 50/50 split? Okay, thank you. To say the county is willing to do our part and maybe at a 50% of the ask and see what the city can do when they meet next week.
I would much prefer to fund this in full and I would anticipate that we are going to need another month after that and maybe the city could fund the next month. I just hesitate to go too slow in terms of giving the men's cold weather shelter the stability they need in order to keep staff on and keep important public health service going for the next month.
All right. Did you have a thought, Annabelle?
I'm mulling this over.
Well.
Tiny, tiny is important here, so I'm just trying to think, you know, if we go another month, if we go for the next month, but then whether patterns don't change or something else happens, then what happens? Are we going to be revisiting this issue?
That's the proposal and the timetable is it would start May 15th and run through June 15th. So we've got some time before it starts up and I would feel more comfortable saying that the county will do our share and next week would be their meeting, May 4th, I assume they're meeting on Monday and could be able to see what the city's thoughts are. So I guess my thought would be to fund half of the proposal for 30 days and see what, see if the city is willing to continue their sharing of the cost of the operation.
I would feel more comfortable with that. One of the concerns I have is we really haven't heard from many of the other communities in terms of how they're faring in this arena. Is it all just happening in Corvallis? I don't know. I haven't heard much out of Palomar, but I mean, I'd like to know a little bit more.
Okay.
You know, there have been, and I'm sure I can chime in here as well, but there have been regular calls with service providers that include providers from all around the county, including folks from Palomar, from Monroe. And I know that our liaison staff has been talking to people in other communities. So this is, well, this is definitely a Corvallis need. Our staff kept a pulse on what's going on around the county as well. And Hyatt has made some comments in the chat in the margin as well about funding.
And to chime in on the ask from the rural areas, again, I know there's a lot of conversations with liaison group about what rural areas need, and I think they're in the same boat as I described. They don't know what they don't know yet. And as we turn businesses back on eventually, that's going to become way more evident. I mean, we might get small business loan requests in the hundreds of thousands of dollars or millions of dollars as it starts going. The other thing that I'm concerned about related to vulnerable populations are those low-income folks and specifically seniors and developmentally disabled individuals who are at home, that maybe we don't have a ton of care providers that we are easily in contact with that we're missing out on, especially seniors in the rural areas who maybe aren't as internet savvy. Yes, their neighbor's looking out for them right now, but I just want to make sure we are serving the community equally as the county and as the emergency operations center. And again, it's not that I don't necessarily support this effort, I just want to highlight that as a very big need as we move forward and an area of cost that we're going to have to start considering and figure out a way to mobilize temporary hires or employees or whatever we're going to have to do and start putting some dollars and personnel time towards those things too.
Suzanne?
Thank you. That, where I was thinking too is this is, I just want to make sure that we're looking at all these potential items that might happen so that we can see what our resources are to help everybody.
I'd like to also point out that we need to work very closely when it comes to any of the seniors and isolated seniors with the council of governments because they are our senior folks, our elder care specialists. And so I think we need to involve them more closely in some of the conversations that we're having about vulnerable populations so that we don't have parallel efforts going on.
Okay.
Absolutely, I think that makes a lot of sense.
Hi, this is Sarah. Is it an okay time to make a few comments?
Sure, please.
Thank you. I just wanted to reiterate that the hygiene center only has two and a half weeks left of funding to maintain the critical service that they're providing right now. The proposal in front of you is for an extension of current services for 30 days only. I imagine that we will submit another 30 days if we're still asking individuals to shelter in place, to stay where they are, and to follow CDC recommendations for physical distancing and proper hygiene and sanitation. In addition, if we wanted to expand services to additional tent campers, a proposal that we've talked about submitting in addition to this 30-day extension is a proposal to expand infrastructure. So that would mean expand showering capabilities and expand laundry facilities so that we can provide services to a larger area of individuals who are in more outlying encampments, who aren't just camping right at the BMX park. And the reason why I'm bringing this up is because I think there will be multiple opportunities for the city and county to discuss how to share the cost of this critical service in our community.
Sarah, this is Joe Kirby and I'll direct this question to you and Charlie and Danielle. The question pertains to any available funding that's available within the Health Department's existing budget or any other resources the Health Department has access to. Reason I'm asking that question is I'm making the big assumption that this request that's before us today ultimately would come out of the county's general fund. And so just trying to make sure we've looked at other opportunities for funding, whether or not that's within the current biennium Health Department budget or elsewhere.
So Joe, this is Charlie. And so there have been two rounds of special COVID funding to public health, but this would not be an allowable expense under either of those, either the state or federal public health COVID money that we've gotten so far.
This is Sarah.
For behavioral health, our funding is still, OHA has not opened our funding to be used for these kind of resources as of yet. I do think that that may happen, but right now, OHA is still being relatively, resistant is probably the best word, to open our service element dollars to be utilized for non-identified service element support. They've opened our funding to be used a little bit more flexibly in terms of covering staffing costs and that kind of thing, but in terms of redirecting the funding, they have not allowed for that to happen.
All right. Yes?
This is Sarah. I just wanted to add that Community Services Consortium, our community action agency, has already our community action agency, has already funded an extension of the hygiene center which has allowed us some time for this hygiene center to remain open until we've been at a place where we are right now where we can continue to consider additional funding to extend these services. Community Services Consortium, however, has a finite amount of funds and they have a lot of asks in front of them at this time.
And I'll also add to that, we have been negotiating with IHN CCO to help with some hotel motel sheltering costs. So I think in an effort to try and get one lane of funding supported, I don't think that there is another lane at this moment to ask for some of these costs from the CCO.
Well, I would propose that committing the county to 50% of the $18,000 ask and revisit this at our next Tuesday meeting, May 5th, to see what the Corvallis City Council can, can come up with and maybe to continue the shared effort on, on keeping this facility going. And that should give folks enough time to make plans for keeping it going from May 15th to June 15th.
Pat, how much was that $10 figure you said? I didn't quite catch that.
One month total cost $18,450 for 30 days.
Did you say $18,000 or $15,000?
$18,000.
Thank you.
Now, Zan?
So that, that, that's the total cost?
For 30 days.
Okay. Just want to be clear on this. So you're saying that we would, we would do $9,000 then if that was the final cost?
That's my thoughts on going forward till next week.
Okay. So point of clarification, Hyatt has posted in the comments that the next council meeting isn't until May 18th. So if we only fund half, we won't have another, there will not be a city council meeting until May 18th has moved this forward, which will be after the hygiene center is out of funding.
I think that they will have a meeting, it just won't be on the agenda until May 18th because their agendas are already set. That's my understanding. But so.
Oh, yes. Thank you for that clarification.
Let me interject.
I would prefer to see funding right now.
Joe?
Just to clarify, Mark Shepherd indicated to me that this would be a discussion that he would have with city council next week. So I don't know what that means regarding their meeting schedule or agenda topics or what have you. But that's what he shared with me is that he would have an opportunity to have dialogue with the council about it next week.
Well, thank you for that. That was my understanding is there would be time for discussion at the meeting next week.
And Commissioners, I could certainly step out and call Mark Shepherd just to confirm that if that's an important piece of your decision-making.
Well, I remain convinced that we should just go ahead and fund this one month's worth because I don't think that this is just going to be over in 30 days. And I would rather just keep it simple and clean and go forward. But it, I understand that it also is going to be a long event and there'll be plenty of other asks. So that's it.
Annabelle?
I'm okay with going ahead for this month. I think that we really have to look at, at a full in-depth conversation on it because we don't know if something is going to happen again. And so we should be probably more prepared, although it's really hard to prepare for something like, like a pandemic, that we should be looking at this. I think we should be looking at it more frequently than we have been. So yeah, I'm okay with one month.
I guess my concern is that sets the pattern going forward that the county's going to handle this.
I, that's my concern too, Pat. I'm, I'm, that's kind of why I'm hesitant about it. I understand the need right now. I get that. But I am, setting precedent is also something we have to be very careful with.
So again, for clarification, Hyatt has put in the chat that Mayor Traver has indicated that this is on the May 4th agenda as Mark indicated to Joe.
With, with that clarification, can we wait till our May 5th meeting to make the final decision?
Commissioners, I really, Commissioners, I really need some guidance today because my commitment is to get back to Mark Shepherd, the city manager, this afternoon so that he can wrap up any work that he needs to do for the meeting next week. And so any direction that you can give to me today, whether or not is, whether or not it will fund it for 30 days or 50% of the 30 days or whatever it is, I definitely need some direction today.
All right. Any thoughts, Annabelle?
I think that this is what I've been saying. We, we're very clear that we're looking at this for 30 days. And then, but we have to have a much more in-depth conversation about making these kinds of decisions in terms of, you know, who's going to take responsibility. So I'm fine with the, with the going, if, if the city's willing to pitch in the other half, then I'm fine with the, our half of it, but this is for a 30-day period.
Annabelle, that's not clear to me whether you're willing to wait till our meeting on May?
Well, that was your question. That was your question. Yeah, but if we, I am willing to wait if we can have further discussion on it, sure. I misunderstood your question. Sorry.
Okay. So Commissioners, I guess what are you looking for from the city? Is there a proposal that you're asking me to make to the city at this point? Or are you wanting the county not to take any action and wait for the city to see what they're going to do?
I think we should pay for 50% at this point in time so that you can go to the city and that's for the other 50%.
Annabelle?
Well, I, who, who, the city, they haven't talked about this yet. Am I misunderstanding this?
Commissioner Harameo, they have not discussed this at a council meeting at this point based on the information that I have. The first opportunity they have to do that is next week. And Mark Shepherd and I had a conversation last night and he indicated that the city would possibly be interested in participating financially. And he and I agreed that I would get back to him this afternoon based on whatever direction the Board of Commissioners was going. And I did not commit to him that the county was going to pay 100% of it or 50% or what have you. We just committed to each other to, to find a way for the city and the county to work together on this issue. So that was the extent of our conversation.
Again, you know, like I said, I'm, I'm willing to go ahead, but if the county is going to be the leader on this, then I have more, more questions to ask. I mean, we've got an entire county we've got to look out for, not just the city of Corvallis.
Okay.
I'm fine with, with the proposal to, to, to fund half of this if the city, if the city comes in with the other half.
So Commissioners, I would like a formal motion on this topic.
That would be my motion, if we can turn that into a motion language, that, that, that we go ahead and speak to the city that we're willing to, to, whatever, if the dollar cost is $18,000, we're willing to throw in $9,000. And, but we're, that, that's, that's what would be my motion for this period of time.
So just to clarify, this is for, this is through the month of May?
No, it's May 15th, May 15th through June 15th.
Okay, so Erica, if I understood Commissioner Harameo, her, her motion was to fund half of the sanitation facility through June 15th, no more than $9,000, contingent upon the city matching that amount.
Can we amend that?
That's exactly what I said.
Can we amend that to 50% of, of the cost?
So, so it would be to fund 50% of the cost of the sanitation center through June 15th?
Yeah, from May 15th to June 15th.
From 15th to June 15th, contingent upon the city matching.
Is that?
Got it. This is Erica. Yeah, I got it.
I was just going to ask you if that was clear enough for you. Now, Zan?
I will second that, but I would rather not set that it's, say, contingent upon the city funding. I'd like the city to pay fair, fair, but I think we need to take care of this situation, this public health situation regardless. And I certainly don't feel what would be a good idea to cause a lapse in service.
Will you consider that as an amendment to your motion, Annabelle?
I didn't hear that last, last comment, Zan.
So really what Zan is asking is whether you would entertain a friendly amendment to your motion to drop the contingency component?
The contingency? I, I, that, that, I think you added that, but I just want to make sure that we have, we, this conversation doesn't continue to go. I mean, what I want to do is be able to have this a more thorough conversation to see what, what are responsibilities. I understand that public health implications call this. I just, all patients are in doubt, serving the rest of the county.
Okay. Maybe it would help, Erica, can you read the motion as you have it?
Yes. Move to inform the city that the county is willing to fund 50% of the cost of the sanitation facility from May 15th to June 15th, contingent on the city matching that amount.
That seems like what I was thinking, yeah.
And Zan tried to make a friendly amendment to drop the, that the county's effort is contingent on the city coming through.
Okay. Well, we can drop that portion of it.
Did I, did I capture what you said, Zan? Was it, Erica?
I think, I think what I, what I was trying to say, just to try to clarify this is, my original was I don't, I don't have a problem with working with one month. That if we're going to have to hold version, that's where my problem is.
Right. The, the motion is for one month, so we can have further, further discussion. But I want to clear up, Zan made a friendly amendment to drop the, that our, our funding is contingent on the city coming through.
So what happens if the city says that we're not going to put anything in there? That means that we pick up the whole bill?
That's correct.
Not according to the motion you just have on the table.
The motion is 50%.
No, I know that, that's not according to the motion we have on the table now.
We would, if the city does, if the city does not come through, then we would have to revisit this.
Yes, we would.
All right. One more time, Erica.
Sure. I move to inform the city that the county is willing to fund 50% of the cost of the sanitation facility from May 15th to June 15th.
Are we really addressing this to the city?
Are you, wait, wait, I have a lot of background noise on my end. I'll second the motion.
Is it accurate that we're addressing this to the city?
What I've heard is that the county is committing to paying for 50% of the cost that's been proposed for May 15th through June 15th.
And that is independent of what the city does. But it does leave the other 50% up in the air if the city opts not to contribute.
So can, can you take?
Just a clarification. Is it okay to, should I take out the part about inform the city out of the motion and just say move to fund, to inform the city that the county is willing? Do we still want that phrase?
Yes.
Okay.
Because we're, we're addressing this to the operations, not, not to, I mean, the city's involved, but they, they're not the focus of this funding.
I'm sorry. Yes, take that phrase out or keep, to keep the phrase about informing?
We're taking that out, Erica. So what the board, what the board is voting on right now is that the county will pay 50% of the proposed cost from May 15th to June 15th, period.
That's, that's fine. Thank you, Joe.
Commissioner Malone, I just wanted to point out that Commissioner Ogierow had to drop off of the board meeting approximately two minutes ago. It looks as though she's in the process of rejoining, but she did miss that last summary of the motion that you just provided. Joe?
Thank you. I think we're stuck.
Um, she's back.
Can I chime in?
Yes.
I'm having technical difficulties. I have two different go-to meetings at the same time and I can't figure out how to get out of the other one and I can't hear anything that's happening at the board meeting. So I'm going to try logging out again and log on.
Okay. Do we have any music?
I saw Beth's picture a little bit ago. Was he, did he just come in?
Who's that?
I thought, looked like Beth had signed into, into this.
Yes.
Okay.
He was there.
Yes, Commissioner Harameo, he was here for about five or 10 minutes during the discussion.
Okay, thank you.
So if you ever question the wisdom of having motions presented to you ahead of time, this is a good example of why we do that.
I've never questioned that, Vance, ever.
It looks like Commissioner Ogierow is back with us now, but it appears she may still be having some technical difficulties. I'm going to pop off and try her on her cell phone to see if I can assist.
Can you hear us, Zan? Give me a thumbs up if you can hear.
I can hear you, but it's challenging.
Okay. We have simplified the motion. I think we need probably, Erica, would you read the motion as it's currently at?
Sure. I move that the county will fund 50% of the cost of the sanitation facility from May 15th to June 15th.
Okay. That was. Okay, that was Annabelle's motion, is that your motion, Annabelle, and we have a second from, from Zan?
Second.
All in, all in favor of the motion, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Commissioners, I will notify the city manager today of your decision, and I will then communicate back to you during our policy meeting next Tuesday subsequent to the city meeting.
Okay, thank you.
I think when we do, you gotta get back to that discussion again, we have to really kind of anticipate that there, there might be other, other roadblocks or other situations that come up, and that we have, try to have a thorough discussion around that in terms of having, giving ourselves some guidance as to how we would, how we would proceed if we have more situations like this.
Absolutely, Annabelle, that, that's, as we go along, I think of, I think it's May nineteenth, the state budget forecast, and we get more information, we've got a very sketchy map, financial map at this point, and making decisions that will affect us going, going forward, but next up, Safe Camp request for funding, and that looks like that's Sarah.
Hi, this is Sarah, I'm seeing that Greg Vret is still on the line, so I'm, I'm glad that's the case, we've submitted this proposal for Safe Camp to continue funding mainly their staffing as individual shelter in place, the reason why I'm glad Greg is on the phone is because Safe Camp is still currently has an active land use action, and so there will be, need to be some discussion about funding for that.
Okay.
Commissioners, I, I think it might be a good idea to have Vance interject since there is a pending land use application.
Yeah, thanks, Joe, I, I have to tell you, this raises a big, big, big red flag from a conflict of interest standpoint, any action you take regarding a piece of property or the property owner that has a pending land use application jeopardizes the ability of the county to be perceived as making an unbiased decision on that land use application if and when it reaches the Board of Commissioners, I know that the, in the past, the, the greatest extent that we've been forced to keep at arm's length from applicants is when you've got maybe an email or a phone call from an interested citizen to talk about the land use application, and that's an easy push, we simply point out that we have to maintain, we can't engage because of the conflict of interest and the perception of bias, have now, this request for funding from an applicant who will be asking you to decide a land use application really creates the potential perception that the Board of Commissioners has either made a tacit decision on an application, or is leaning in favor of an applicant or a person, so I, I cannot caution you strongly enough to consider the ramifications to the perception of how you perceive the land use application as you consider this request for funding.
Commissioners, I would also like to point out that based on your direction last week, Benton County is working with Benton Community Foundation, and you have authorized funding one hundred thousand dollars via the Benton County Community Foundation for them to award grants to nonprofit organizations, this might be an avenue that this particular organization could go, where it would not be conflict of interest as Vance has described. In addition, the last topic on, on our agenda under this section today is really Mary Ottley getting direction from the board regarding guidelines for the Benton Community Foundation, so just to know that's sitting there in the wings to be discussed.
Well, and I, I feel more comfortable with, part of the reason we did the Benton Community Foundation significant award, I think you said hundred thousand dollars, was that they're set up for taking applications, setting priorities, and versus us doing it kind of ad hoc and without really having, like Annabelle was talking about, having some kind of roadmap and priorities that, that we could follow for funding requests, so, Zan, are you able to hear the discussion all right?
Thank you for asking, yes, I'm just fine, I had another forum that popped up automatically at eleven thirty, and I couldn't figure out how to turn it off, it's gone, I had Sarah Geltzer's voice in my other ear.
Okay, not, not a bad voice to have, so, Annabelle, any thoughts?
Sorry, I was muted.
Okay.
What you're talking about that makes sense.
Okay, so, Zan, what?
If you're talking about the foundation, that, yeah, that makes, that makes more sense, I think, thank you, Joe, for reminding us of that commitment that we made, and that just, that, that to me is a better way to go for some of these types of requests.
And, and that was, and that was just last week, so.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, so, we are declining to fund the Safe Camp at this point, is that the consensus?
I would, yeah, we could also suggest to them to go to the foundation to check them out.
Okay, so, no motion needed?
I don't think so.
Okay, all right, next up.
Commissioners, the next topic that I had for you, and I think Brian Lee may have already addressed this when I stepped out earlier in our meeting, and that was just to give you an update on the reopening conversation and the shift that the EOC is making from response to recovery, Brian, did you address that earlier?
Yes, mostly I did, and just to focus on a thorough recovery framework to be in place hopefully by the end of this week, and then, once the governor puts out her guidance on, on phase one, we will adopt those changes and incorporate those changes into ours, and our reopening plan has trigger points for closing again or dialing things back, and wait the throttle up and down as well as guidance to different sectors on basically best practices, and again, right now, it's a very rough framework and outline, and we'll refine it as soon as the governor puts out her guidance, but I wanted to have something ready so we can just roll forward with it when we get her guidance, and it'll be up to the VOC and Joe and Mark to work some details out on dates, because we aren't doing dates, we're doing other types of thresholds instead, so if we were setting kind of arbitrary dates, that's something that I'd rather give general guidance on, and like you guys decide on what, what date to move forward with, with public health and everyone else, so that's, that's a general update on that reopening plan.
Okay, and I, I think it's critical to kind of follow the lead of the governor's plans and timetables, and then we can fill in the specifics for what we're doing, but I'm concerned that some of the counties are in a piecemeal, doing it on their own, and that's, people are having a hard enough time figuring out what's all right to do, what's not, and having a consistent message, I think, is, is critical, so I, I appreciate the careful response, Brian.
And one more, yeah, and one more piece on the reopening plan, just so you guys know, a reopening plan is not required at this point by the state for counties to reopen, I believe right now, and this again, very draft, even at state level, is they only require the, a letter from the health officer, a letter, a certification saying there's enough PPE for first responders by the Board of Commissioners, and then a, I believe a letter of request from the hospital CEO in the area or something like that, those are the only requirements right now, and again, that's not set in stone, however, talking with Joe and other folks, we really want to have a comprehensive approach to how we reopen, and make sure we document everything thoroughly, and as a guidebook, so we can, again, throttle up and down as needed, and that way, when we're getting mounting political, political pressure, we have something to fall back on and say, we are following an established plan that we all agreed on, wasn't written in a vacuum, it's collaborative, this is what we're doing collectively, so that, yeah, this is a little bit more on that plan, that's our, that's what we're looking at moving forward.
Okay, thank you, Zan?
In that light, I, I know that the governor was really hoping for a regional approaches, and can you let us know at all what the status is of discussions with Lincoln and Lynn counties that also are part of the greater Samaritan Health System?
Yes, so I am communicating with the emergency managers on a regular basis, and we're trying to think things up as much as possible, obviously, there is a lot of political and social dynamics that are quite different between Lynn and Lincoln County and us, but we are trying to do our best to align them, and as soon as we have a loose framework, I am gonna immediately, they're already aware of this, and we're all working on it sort of together, I'm gonna let them know what we're doing, and see if there's any major differences that are gonna cause problems, but otherwise, I think we're all on a similar page, and I know Lynn County had some ideas about when they were gonna open, and they throttled that back a little bit due to some recent public health changes, so I think we're all in sync with how we're moving forward and some of our parameters, but I will ensure that we are doing that in a semi-regional approach at least.
Great.
That's good to hear, because there's a lot of inconsistency across the state.
Anything else for Brian? If, if not, next item is money for Public Service Week, employee recognition, Joe?
Commissioners, last week or the week before that, you supported a proposal to fund our Benton County Peer Support Program, which was a program that was put together by employees to help one another and one, and each other's families during this difficult time, at that point, we did commit to funding of ten thousand dollars to help support that program get off the ground, at this point, I don't believe that there's been any money spent out of that ten thousand dollars, and I wanted to put on your radar that we are making a effort to, next week, it's Public Service Recognition Week, and we are making an effort to recognize public servants during that week, it's a national campaign, we do have a committee working on it, they do need some funding, and I was hoping that we could direct some of the ten thousand dollars that were identified for the Benton Pierce Support, and redirect some of that money to fund the Public Service Recognition Week activities. So I'm just looking for a thumbs up, a thumbs down, a, any direction that the board would have.
Okay, Zan?
Yeah, I just wanted to jump in and say that the major expense that we're considering so far is printing, and the bill is not very steep, I would expect that the total bill will probably come in under about fourteen hundred dollars, and there may be some other ancillary expenses, so we're probably not thinking more than a couple thousand dollars.
I, I take, I take that as a thumbs up, okay, Annabelle, oh, oh, another thumb, a lot of thumbs, okay, is that what?
I can, I, I need, or I got exactly what I need, thank you.
Okay.
Commissioners, the last topic we have for you today is Mary Ottley, and in your email earlier this morning, I forwarded to you a email that relates to guidelines for the Benton Community Foundation, this applies to the hundred thousand dollars that we're contributing for the Benton Community Foundation to disperse on our behalf, so I'm gonna kick it over to Mary, and she'll walk through the information that I forwarded to you this morning.
Good morning, Commissioners, I was looking to see if it's morning or afternoon, but it is still morning, what I sent to you was just a piece of the agreement we're going to sign with the Benton Community Foundation, Vance and I are working on the rest of the language, but really looking for direction on where the funds will go, and I added everything that possibly could be added, that, that was written in the original document that we got from the foundation, so take, you know, take it as it is, and if you agree with it, that's fine, if you want to change it, that's fine too, if you want to add stuff, just let me know, I just want to be able to give the foundation some direction on, on where our funds should go.
Okay.
I like the language.
Can't agree with.
That looks good to me.
Okay.
I'm here.
Yeah?
Thank you for putting it together, I think that's very helpful.
Well.
Well, this way they have understanding what we've like have done.
Right, and as was pointed out last week, it was, we can't tell them what to fund or not to fund, but we can give them general guidelines, what, what our priorities are, and I, I think you've done a, a good job of giving some guidance from the county.
The only other maybe guidance, is it, are you concerned about that a certain percentage should go to outside the city of Corvallis, into our rural committees, communities, because we could say, you know, twenty-five percent should be for our rural communities or, or not, I mean, that's just one other consideration.
I think using the economic development funds that we authorized recently, and I think the split there was seventy percent Corvallis area and thirty percent outlying areas and minority businesses, so I, I think some maybe general guidelines like that might, might be appropriate, I mean, they're not hard and fast, but that, that recognizes the, the whole county.
That makes sense to me, yeah.
Okay, Zan?
I think that makes sense, and I, but I would also hope that if that wasn't playing out in terms of the need over the next few months, that, that Chris Cockett should come back to us and let us know that there's a portion of the funds that are just going unutilized or underutilized, so that we can adjust as we need to.
Yep, well.
I'd like to see that as aspirational.
Right, and that's all, that's all we're doing, Mary?
One other piece that you're not seeing of this agreement is that we're asking for some regular reporting as to where the funds are going as well, so I think that would give him the opportunity to come back and, and report on how, how it's being distributed.
That was gonna be my, my comment with this kind of contribution that we need to have reports on how it's reports on how it's being used. So, Mary, are you going to add that to this little document?
It is. It is really...it's a piece that you're not seeing is the regular reporting. I will just add this percentage split as well.
Okay. If you're still there, Brian, do you have any thoughts on how this fits in with what the...some of the asks for the...at the EOC? I may have lost...
I think we lost Brian.
Yep. Okay. That's okay, and like Annabelle was talking about, just we need to continue this effort of figuring out how to prioritize these requests, and I think Benton Community Foundation is a great partner in these efforts and has the expertise that the county does not have in figuring out how to set priorities. So, was there anything else on this topic?
No, I've got the direction I need. Thank you.
And I'm sure we will continue this conversation, but that's all on this list. Do we...I think the only other thing on the agenda was potential information sharing from Joe and commissioners. We have shared quite a bit of information this morning, but do you have anything else for us, Joe?
Commissioners, I have nothing to add at this point.
Zan?
Nothing at this point in time, thank you.
Okay. Annabelle?
Yeah, only one thing. I don't...not sure. I think I don't know who I shared this information with, but the last transportation meeting, which was by telephone, I believe, or by this sort of method, was that we wanted to begin to have the conversation around what a new federal transportation package is going to look like, and began to talk with our...with the Chair of the Transportation Committee in...what do you say? That's Congressman DiPaio, and have some briefings from his staff for the Act, the Cascade West Area Commission on Transportation, so we could see what some of our priority packages might be. And I think we're in a unique place to be able to kind of influence that a little bit. So that's all I have right now.
Okay. I have a short addition. I've got a call into June Chata. I think with all the primary voting snafus across the country and Wisconsin being the latest example of how not to do an election, I think we ought to do all that we can to highlight how well vote by mail works in Oregon and that it's routine, and there are very, very few problems with the process. And I think...I know Senator Wyden's trying to work on that on the national level, and I think we ought to do whatever we can to publicize how well it works here, but...
Yeah. I think that makes sense. I'd say that New York canceled its primary yesterday. And so that bothers them in terms of, you know, having people being able to make those kinds of choices. I think this is creating a lot of problems. And we'll see.
And I anticipate we will have a nice boring primary election where things go like they always do. So...
Exactly.
I think we ought to...
Exactly.
We ought to try to have a little bit of a spotlight on how well it works here. Well, we are now to other. Is there any other other?
I don't know if you were watching yesterday, but I think that Colorado and one other western state has joined the compact with Washington, Oregon, and California.
Nevada.
Nevada, there you go. I know...I thought it was Nevada, but I...yeah. Which I think...I think that speaks highly of our...where it's getting some other folks involved, and that's good.
Well, and that goes back to almost no matter what we're talking about, it's important to coordinate and have a consistent message so that we're not confusing...
Absolutely.
...confusing people any more than they're already confused.
Yeah, and consistent process, you know? We are more...we're more linked together than we...than some people think we are, you know?
Oh, absolutely. Well, with great pleasure, I will end this meeting. It's lunchtime.